Is unmuted.
Should we be able to hear Cathy speaking? I heard Sean, I think.
Sorry, I'm just, I haven't quite started.
Okay, no, thanks. I just was, I saw your mouth moving, but I didn't know if I was supposed to be able to listen.
Do you want me to amend the agenda? You can do it. Okay. So. Cheryl will amend the agenda to add in between 13.1 and 13.2. An HR matter, I guess we'll call it. We're right. Okay. So one minute, one minute. Which one? Oh, yeah, this will just pull it off budget and deal with it there. And 9.2 is not on consent. No, it was not. It was never there. Well, did you? You emailed us about 9.2. It wasn't on consent. That's all I'm saying. Also on my package, it wasn't on consent. Everyone's shaking their heads.
The budget was on consent, correct?
But you do, but so that was what you emailed about, not the police building.
No, I want the police building as well. I'm just saying that the eight two is recent because of my motion. I just don't know if you want to put it as a slotted item or you want to do it.
No, we're taking it. It's off consent. Yeah, for sure. Because we have to deal with your motion.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, I guess I can call the meeting director because it's one o'clock. For December 20th, 2022, last one of the calendar year. Attendance at the start of the meeting is 100% with Council Bramansky and Council Jolly online. I need an adoption of the amended and as you just heard me discussing with Mr. Hiltz, we're going to add. An HR matter in camera as 13.2 and then the council dialogue will become 13.3. Thank you, Council Mekai. Go ahead.
That the December 20th, 22, 2022 agenda be adopted as amended.
Okay, call for the vote. Sorry, did I miss that? It flashed. I'm sure it was unanimous. Yes. Okay. Now, we had one registered speaker, which was Elena Haley. Is she online with us yet? No, she isn't. Just joining. Okay. Perfect. Good timing, Lena. If you want to unmute and turn on your camera, we can. Get to your presentation. Can you hear us?
Yep. Can you hear me?
I can. We can't see you. Did you want us to see you?
Yes. Sorry, I'm just having a bit of a technical difficulty.
It's all good. There you are.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Nice to see you. So thank you for registering. I hopefully the. The staff in the office let you know that there's a five-minute speaker's presentation criteria. And if you're ready, you can start whenever you want.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know I would be right up.
We're moving fast.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today on behalf of Kaleo Collective. In this time, I want to share our experience of applying for funding and respectfully also make some requests. Kaleo Collective is a registered charity that supports single mothers and their children in our community. We provide support that address the unique challenges of being a single parent. As an organization, we have served over 2,000 women and children since 2019. With over 1,800 of them being located right here in St. Albert, so St. Albert Women and Children. And I would like to, I would like to share my experience of applying for funding today. In 2019 and 2022, Kaleo was told by two city staff that we were not a fit for funding. As we were a duplication of services. This is a point that we actually really strongly disagreed with. But if we weren't able to apply for funding, then we didn't. In 2021, Mayor Heron actually stepped in and made a personal request. That Kaleo be allowed to speak directly to the committee and address the duplication of services concerns. At that time, the committee had no concerns after we shared. Our presentation, they had no concerns and said that they would accept an application on our behalf in that. In that grant term in the fall. So I'm thrilled to say that we were, that we were granted $21,000 for the year of 2022. We delivered that grant on time and on budget, completing all quarterly reports. This year, the recommendation is that Kaleo receive no funding. The feedback is that once again, we are, that we are duplicating. So we're back at the same spot. So we're defending the same set of data points. But I'm going to go ahead and jump into them again today because I feel like I just don't have any other, like any other recourse. So single parent families are unique and they have a unique set of challenges and experiences. And if you have ever been a single parent, you will know what I'm talking about. The challenges are both mental and physical. Parenting alone is very hard. There can also be a deep sense of isolation in this type of household. And as a result, Kaleo programs run in the evenings. After workdays when most of our clients are at work as a single mom, most of them are working. We also run programs on the weekends. Most charities are not operating evenings and weekends, including those in St. Albert. We also run our peer-to-peer weekly support group from nine to 10 p.m. virtually. To reduce the loneliness as our client said that they experienced that after their children are in bed. And their other friends are having what they call their family time and they don't want to interrupt. So we run our programming. In conjunction with what the women and children are asking for and need and then also. At times when they can read, when they can access it. Further, we do provide childcare when we run in-person programmings to reduce further those barriers to participation. There are other excellent organizations that support families in St. Albert. There is no doubt. But there are no other organizations in St. Albert that offers programming specific to lone parenting. And at times that they can participate and that offer childcare. So once more, we make a difference. We are not a duplication. Another point of feedback this year that we received. Was that we had twenty thousand dollars of reserve funds and that reserves mean that no funding is required. Because these grants are to keep the lights on. We believe that actually reserves are important. As a small organization, we worked so hard to put that twenty thousand dollars into reserve. And I can assure you, because I completed all of those grant reports, that not a single of the dollars that St. Albert gave us to go towards. Our, our staffing costs were used. For any of those purposes, but we do value it. We do think it's important. But in doing some research and, and looking at some other city-funded organizations annual reports, which are of course in the public domain. You know, what we actually learned is that there is an organization that receives funding that has a hundred and fifty-three thousand in reserve currently. And had a surplus. Of over a hundred thousand for the last two fiscal years. So I guess we would like to know what the definition of keeping the lights on is. Because our reserves are a lot smaller than other organizations that are receiving funding. You know, we. You know, getting this kind of feedback for us has been, has been hard. Because what it does is it leaves us feeling. That, that we are not a valuable or needed service, or that there's not a place for us in the community's collective services. And I don't actually think that that's true. You know, we were told that we could come and talk about this today and I have some, I have some concerns, I have some documents, I have some data. And five minutes just will not allow me to do justice. So I'm here today to ask. For in the new year, a time when I could meet with either city council privately. Or with a representative to go through some of the concerns that I see around inequality and inconsistency and misinformation that we have experienced since two thousand and nineteen. Because we would really love to continue serving St. Albert Women and Children. But if the city does not want to participate in being a partner. That leaves us as an organization having to, you know, reevaluate and see what the path forward looks like. I did just a really quick calculation and figured that in the number of, in the number of.
Your, your five minutes is up and I have to be kind of strict with that. There is an opportunity for council to ask questions, so that, that might happen right now, but I just, so. I, I heard you say just at the end there. That your specific request would be to meet. With council, which I don't know if that's the right body, but maybe with the Community Service Advisory Board, or maybe even with some of the granting. Staff in community support.
Actually, respectfully, Kathy, that's not what I'm asking for. I have, I have met with staff.
You're asking for.
I'm respectfully asking for, like a private meeting with either an independent third party, not city staff. I've already gone that route and not the committee. You know, I actually created a video that for an eleven-person committee was viewed four times. So I actually have met with this committee and I don't want to meet with the committee again. I'd like to take this to a different level of. Oversight.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to ask you a question, Council Killick, but I'll, I'll open it up for council to ask Lena some questions and then what happens. Lena is, the next piece of our agenda is called business arising. So anything that they council heard. From you during your presentation, it allows council to ask questions of our staff or, or the committee. Council Killick and Council Bermansky are the council reps on that committee, so we'll go to that. After we ask questions of you and I see that Council Bermansky already has her hands up, so go ahead, Shelley.
Hello, Lena, thank you for coming today. I just had one question, why your request for funding was more than double of last year. It was quite a substantial increase. So I just wanted a justification for that, if you could, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So our staffing, our staff has increased. The headcount and, and also like the positions and the, and the pay. So that's why our, our request was more. Also, we didn't actually get granted the full amount that we requested the year previous, so. And also I addressed this question in that, in that video that I sent. When you guys sent eleven questions. To me, I did a video and I actually addressed that question in it.
We did see the video, yes. The other question is, how many staff do you have?
So I have, well, depends on whether you're counting like full, like full-time like equivalents or contractors or what, what exact number are you looking for?
I would say your regular staff.
So like I'm in the executive, we have an executive director, a program and services manager, an admin assistant. We have somebody who does contract work that helps with communication, somebody that contracts to I T. Contract bookkeeping, and then we also have a number of program facilitators.
Okay, that's all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council Killick, go ahead.
Hi, Lena, good, good to see you. Thanks for joining us today, virtually, probably the best thing to do on a cold day like today. You, you'd mentioned in your initial grant application. That you were based in your office location and business addresses in Edmonton. Can you explain a little bit? Why? Because we always look at. St. Albert-based businesses and just clarify why your, your business address is Edmonton.
Yeah, you bet. So, first of all, actually, the charity's registered address is not an Edmonton address. The registered address is sixty-nine Nadine Way, which is my home address. And. I've ran that charitable organization from my, from my home office for years, actually even before it was a thing to do. Because that kind of money is not what we want to put, we don't want to put money into bricks and mortars. We want to put it into hearts and souls. That's where we, that's where we value. So I looked at trying to get an office in St. Albert when it became apparent that we had staff. And that we needed to not just work in my, in my home and the prices in St. Albert were. Were very high and. Just, just outside of St. Albert in the West End, I was able to get. An office that could accommodate me and three staff for thirteen hundred dollars a month and also. Would, would give us some free space if we wanted to do anything else in it one time a month. So while, while I drive out of St. Albert to sit at my desk and work every day. The numbers in the grant will show you that the, the actual work is happening primarily in St. Albert. Out of two, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five people that we've served since two thousand and nineteen. One thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine of them are in St. Albert, those St. Albert residents, women and children. And almost all of our operations actually happen there. We ran a summer camp every day at Lyons Park and at the public library. Because we didn't have money to actually afford a, a venue to rent this summer. We try to do everything as lean as possible. So that we can pay our staff appropriately, so that we can help as many women and children as is possible. And so that we can be an organization that is really sustainable. So every dollar that we spend that goes out the door, we're so, so careful about. Because it has impacts.
Yep, thank you. There was obviously some. I, I would say confusion about where your office is located versus where your. Your registered and, and your client base that you're, you're serving. Just a little bit. Of a question on client base, then you'd, you'd mentioned you felt. Or you'd been advised that your service was seen as duplicated. Or duplicating what family community center was duplicating, but then I think you said you work in it. Deliver the same or similar kind of support services to single moms and kids. But at a very different time slot. Evenings and weekends. Could, could you just clarify a little bit around where you see that you're. Not duplicating and where you're providing a different service?
Right, sure, absolutely. So. Yeah, Family Resource Center is definitely come up as a place that. Sorry, sorry, forgot this. Sorry. Um. So Family Resource Center has definitely come up as a place that is seen to be duplicate, to be a duplicating, you know, service delivery agent. And when you take a look at the. At the Community Resource Centers Program Guide, almost all of their programs are actually focused at young children. Our programs are focused mostly on women. With the children coming with, providing childcare. We do deliver some high-value programming to children. For example, we've started a partnership with Code Ninjas. In St. Albert that will start in January. So that the kids are getting access to that STEM programming, the science, technology, engineering and math. But primarily, our programming really does focus on supporting of the woman. Family Resource Center supports primarily the children. Their programs also end quite early in the day. Most, most programming is finished by three thirty. My mom simply cannot make it to programming that goes at three thirty. The Just for Families program that runs on Wednesdays is between ten and eleven A M. And they do have some evening programs. There's three of them in the spring guide, to be exact, and they, they are an hour and a half apiece, three of them. And no childcare is provided. So. You know, we're, we're giving mental health support. I don't believe the Family Resource Center is giving mental health supports to women and children, although I could be stand to be corrected on that. We build strong community. We believe that's one of the best things that we do is build that community where single moms have, they're each other's best resource. We, we refer out to all of the great agencies, you know, whenever we have families that have specific needs, we're always looking to see who else can help support them. But they feel really safe with us and they support each other really well and, you know, it's a. It's a relationship that's very important and very different.
Okay, thank you.
Good thinking, Council Killick, Council Hughes.
Hi, thank you for coming. So the question I have is last year, you were awarded twenty-one, four fifteen. If you were awarded the same amount, would that be enough to get you by for the next year?
Well, it would certainly help. It would, it would make a huge difference to us, absolutely.
So if you don't have the twenty-one grand. I guess, are you still going to be able to get by for the next year? Because there's going to be evaluation. Sometime in the next twelve months about the funding levels for all the outside agencies. So there probably more money in the pot. So what would be the effect if you don't have the twenty-one thousand?
So, you know, I've had to, I've had to have some really hard conversations with my board and we haven't. We haven't really settled on anything yet. We try really hard not to operate with like a scarcity mindset that there's not enough money to go around because we just don't believe that that's true in the world in general. And so it is our hope and our prayer that the money comes for us to continue to do the work. You know, whether it's with the partner of cities, city of St. Albert or, you know, or other places. We're, we're just having, I just, I can't make any promises at this point because. What I'm trying to say, and I don't know if this is getting across, but like this is a year after your problem that we're having. And we have funders now that we've, like, we have funders that are coming to us from all over Canada, right? At Christmas time, I can see where the donations are coming from. They're coming from Ontario, they're coming from Manitoba. We are blessed that there are people all over this country that are supporting mainly St. Albert Women and Children. But if the city of St. Albert does not view us as a partner, doesn't take pride in the work that we do, and if we cannot count on any kind of funding from the city year over year. Then we will have to, you know, make business decisions because unfortunately, that is what we are. We are a business. And we have to operate as such. So twenty-one thousand would, would go a long way in helping us with this, this hole that's in our budget. And if we had it, I believe we could keep going, make some changes, make some adjustments and, and keep going. But I just can't make any promises right now. That's a board decision.
But twenty-one thousand would be enough that you could, you would, you tied yourself over, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? For Lena specifically? Okay, seeing none right now, yeah, hold on, Lena. So I, I do notice that Lorraine, girling from the Chair of the C S A C is here. She registered. She doesn't actually have a presentation, but she, she's, I don't know, Lorraine, if you wanted to take your five minutes of registration or. If, if, just want to answer questions of council. I know a lot of the conversations you guys have at C S A C are in camera. If we need to go in camera, we can. That's simple, but I don't know. Does anyone have any questions for the Chair of the Community Service Advisory Committee? Okay. Oh, there she is, hello, Lorraine. Did you, did you want to comment at all, Lorraine? You're good?
I don't think so. If there's any questions or anything, I certainly can. I know you guys have been given some information and stuff, but. Yeah, if you have any specific questions, I can answer them, sure. Or I can try.
Right, so nothing specific from the rain. Just here. I'm just trying to figure out a path forward. What was, what we see in front of us today for outside agencies is the full, full pot of money. So anything above and beyond that would, doesn't even have to be entertained today. It could come as a notice of motion if, if that. Be, but lady, so I want to get this one more time. You, you don't really, you're not, your request is not to meet with, with staff. Is that correct?
Correct.
Not to meet with the Community Service Advisory Committee? Is that correct?
I spoke with Council Killick. I, I mean, I guess I. Yeah, I. I mean, if that's, if that's the next, if that's the next step that people feel like would be helpful, okay. I, I've met with this community, committee already, like one year ago. I met with them, so I just don't know if there's anything to be. Sure, but I am, and I am, you know, my heart posture is definitely for learning and growing. Like, I'm not, I'm not afraid to learn new information. I just feel like I, I just feel like I'm beating my head against a wall here and I just. I'm, I'm just looking for somebody to listen to the concerns that I've had over the last five years and. And to see if there is a path for us to work jointly together and to be a beautiful partnership. And if there's not, that's okay, you know, we'll look, there's, there's single moms and children all over. And we know that we make a difference in their lives and, and that communities are stronger as a result. We hope it's the city of St. Albert that wants to continue that relationship, but if it's not, we can, we can absolutely, you know. Move on.
Okay. All right, why don't we open it up to questions of administration? I, I see Elizabeth is online. I don't know who else is online here. Hi, Elizabeth. Is there any questions of our administration? We're, we're on business arising from Lena's presentation now. So any questions? Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and I'm not sure exactly who this is too. Perhaps Council Killer could ask. So as I understand it, there was some confusion around actually where. This organization was based, where there was an Edmonton-based organization, which, which would clearly exclude it from our outside agency. And yet we heard today that according to the presenter, it's St. Albert. I know, I'm just wondering how we square that circle.
It's also in the grant application. I mean, they asked me to break out my number of St. Albert.
This is the chance for council to ask questions of administration. Go ahead. Is anyone prepared to answer that one? Maybe Anna? I'm not sure. I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, can I just, the question again, Council Broadhead?
So as I understand it, there was some confusion about whether this was an Edmonton-based organization or St. Albert-based organization. If, if it's an Edmonton base, then it would be offside in terms of our granting program. Colleagues?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Yes, there has been some confusion, I must say. Their main office is located in Edmonton. Some of their large activities. Have been taking place in Edmonton. One of the most recently events was at Legendary Mall. Although there's some other events do take place in St. Albert as well too. So it, it does go back and forth and my understanding is it's. Based on where Lena is able to find. The best facility and at the lowest price in order to accommodate whatever the event is that she's holding. So, so there is definitely back and forth. I think part of the confusion also is in the marketing. And I have discussed this with Lena as well. In the marketing that the organization does, they market themselves as Edmonton and area. Organization. So again, without the specific focus on St. Albert within their marketing information, it does become confusing.
Fair enough, thank you.
Council Killick.
I, I was just going to add that although. This is a weird one because it, it's kind of like Wild North. We, we sponsored Wild North. They serve. Animals and resident calls here from St. Albert. Lena's organization has her office space in Edmonton. We just heard it was significantly cheaper, which is kind of a. Sad note on St. Albert office space cost. But. Her programs, as I understand them now, run in the evenings virtually, so she can serve. A vast majority of her, of her clients are moms from St. Albert. I'm not quite sure how I can answer the marketing. I guess you, you could flip that around and say it's a St. Albert base, you know, we serve St. Albert and surrounding area. Might be an easy fix, but. As I understand it now. Why the, the space is where it is and yet programs are delivered virtually from that space. To, to moms, mostly from St. To, to moms mostly from St. Albert. It, it does shift the discussion that we had at, uh, at CSAC and the way the paper documentation was sent in was, was not clear. So I, I think Counselor Broadhead, your question of how do we circle that square? It's, it's kind of, I, I would say clear, clear information coming today would have maybe provided a different outcome at, at the actual CSAC, um, meeting.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I mean, if I put you on the spot, would you agree with Counselor Kilic on that one? Or if the outcome might have been different. Yep.
Yes.
No, I'm asking Lorraine if she feels the same way.
Um, it's hard to say. That was definitely a component of discussions that we had in camera. Um, there was quite a lot of discussion about that and just, um, comparatively, when we were talking about Big Sisters and Big Brothers, when that organization started, it was very important to the committee that they had a a branch here in St. Albert for us to be willing to fund them. Um, that was a huge part of that discussion back when that was happening as well. And that kind of came up and was part of the conversation about that, that need to have that branch in St. Albert to be funded as a St. Albert organization. Um, so it's tough to say. I'm not, I'm not sure would have, but it was certainly better information to have. It was, it was very difficult based on the, like, like it was mentioned, the paper application.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Uh, Counselor Hughes. Thank you. Hi, Anna. I love your hair, by the way. The funding for twenty twenty-four, we're expecting to have the policy come forward in the next twelve months, right? Is there, I'm, I'm being looking to you because you look like you're excited and I don't want to take it away from you. Is there a probability that there's going to be a recommendation to increase funding for the outside agencies with that new policy revision?
Um, al- ultimately it'll be a council decision, but in terms of the recommendation, I think we are looking at the formula. I would think the other piece we are discussing is about germane to this topic, service delivery vice, uh, location.
Location. Okay, perfect. The one question I have is with, with this organization be eligible under FCSS funding and had you guys had, I'm assuming Connie, that you might have had that thought or process. Cause I, I look at like, uh, the, the Boys and Girls Club and stuff, like, would, would it be, um, eligible or why is it not eligible for FCSS?
Uh, thank you for the question to the mayor to Counselor Hughes. The, um, organization isn't eligible for FCSS funding because our criteria, our eligibility criteria is very strict in that we can't fund a duplicate agency for the same service. And so, um, a- as Lena has identified, there may be some service in the evening and or weekend. It's still parenting support programs and support to children, which is uh, the same components of service that Family Resource Center funds, um, provides that we fund. So in order to fund a different agency to do the same work, one would have to be defunded. So it would be a long-term process we would have to consider.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor, I'm willing to put forward a motion to deal with this today and
It would have to be notice of motion, I think.
Wouldn't it be germane to the business arising? Like to do it.
I, I, I don't, I don't think anyone's prepared to. Yeah.
Okay, we can do notice.
It has to be, I would think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, cause as I said, it, it would be out, uh, outside of the budget request because it would be above and beyond what we have.
Okay, so just so you know, um, I'm looking to their only middle, um, around that, um, I'm going to do that. The collective is awarded the same as last year, twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty for twenty twenty-three funded from the stabilization reserve. I don't give this as a motion.
Lorraine or Lena and Lorraine, have you guys met? Although Lorraine's stepping down from CSAC as the chairs and she, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, no, Lena and I actually do know each other from way back.
We have definitely met, yes.
Yeah. Have you met on this, on this topic?
This topic, no. We've talked about Kaleo and
Today, I did meet with the committee that you were on twice though.
Yeah, in the past. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just seeing in this last budget cycle. Um, yeah, okay. But I'm not, I know you're, this is probably the last time we'll see you in this official capacity.
Yeah, at least for a while.
So Mayor, what I think I'll do is I'll just sit on it for a minute or two. And if I did send it forward, I'll let you guys know in the email. Okay, perfect.
All right, I know we got some work to do ahead of us, uh, but, but I, I, there's going to be some conversations that come out of this and figure out how we can get help.
I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing me today.
All right, um, consent agenda is the next thing on our agenda. Anyone want to read that in? And except for eight point two.
Go ahead. Okay, this is exciting. Are the recommendations in the following agenda ports be approved? Six point one, twenty twenty-three budget minutes, November third, seventh, twenty-ninth, December first, twenty twenty-two, and regular council meeting minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Seven point one standing committee of the whole and adopted minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven point two standing committee of the whole item. Community many sites, constant planning, seven point three standing committee of the whole item inclusive hiring policy update, seven point four standing committee of the whole item non-residential recreation user fees. Seven point five standing committee of the whole item transportation network improvement strategy. Seven point six, the most exciting of our meetings last time, standing committee of the whole item care creek drainage master plans.
Mike thought it was exciting.
Oh, he was excited. Um, seven point seven, request for council motion from Community Services Advisory Committee, twenty twenty-three FCSS funding. Seven point eight request for council motion from Community Services Advisory Committee, twenty point three outside agency grants and nine point one by law, three seven slash twenty twenty-two utility bylaws. First, second, and third readings.
All right, I will call for the vote. When he's closed. And that passes unanimously. I have a quick question on this, Mr. LaFleur. Uh, should have asked you when we're doing our prep meeting, but I'll do it now. So for example, seven point one was the standing committee, the whole unadopted minutes. Seven point two, um, there was actually no recommendation that council needed to approve because it was all done at standing committee. I know historically we've put these things on our council agenda because we had the two standing committees, they only had half a council and it was there for their information. But now that we have all of council at a standing committee, does any of this really need to go to council unless it requires a council?
Madam Chair, Blood Services has, uh, discussed that. And, uh, what we decided to do is for this meeting, just put it on like basically as an information item simply because there might be members of the public that would not read the minutes of the committee of the whole, but would read this, or would read this agenda. So we figured just, just out of an abundance of caution to be sure that the public knows what's going on at committee, there'd be no harm in putting it on there. If council doesn't like that, we can stop doing that. But we didn't think there'd be any harm in putting it on just to make sure more people are aware of what happened at committee. And maybe more people in future will watch committee.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of the point is to push them over there, but it's just something I thought of when I was reading this. None of it really needed to be here, especially like with the minutes, because we can't approve the minutes. The committee approves the minutes, right? All right, we'll talk about that, uh, agenda planning, I guess, in the future. So we are. I guess, I'm, I'm actually again, not going to read all those recommendations too, because we talked about them in committee and there was no recommendations coming out of them. So, uh, except for seven point seven, I will read that one, because that one came from the Community Service Advisory Board. It said, the motion was that the following applications for the two thousand and twenty-three FCSS funding be awarded as follows. Uh, so the boys and girls, uh, big brothers, boys and girls, big brothers, big sisters of Edmonton and area society. Sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for mentoring, St. Albert Community Village and Food Bank, uh, there's seventy-four thousand two hundred and fifty-six for the community liaison program, and then a thousand for the community income tax program. St. Albert Family Resource Center, uh, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars for the family life education program. St. Albertan District Further Education Association, forty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four for their newcomer connection program. Out Loud Foundation, um, eighty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for youth outreach services. The St. Albert Seniors Association, sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven, fifty-two dollars, uh, for the seniors solutions navigator. St. Albert Stop Abuse in Families, twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen for the safe education uh, for youth and three hundred, or thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-four for counseling. Um, St. Albert Breathe Fellowship Education Support, five thousand dollars. And finally, Transitions Rehabilitation Association of St. Albert District, forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars for transitions learning sessions. And then from outside agencies grant, the recommendation was to award as follows. Um, St. Albert Breathe Fellowship, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. St. Albert Housing Society, forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. St. Albert Seniors Association, two hundred and eight thousand, uh, five hundred and ninety-six. St. Albert Victim Services, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. St. Albert Community Village and Food Bank, a hundred and twenty, uh, thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, Stop Abuse in Families. Uh, thirty-nine thousand dollars, St. Albert District Further Education Association. Thirty thousand three hundred and three dollars, St. Albert Family Resource Center, nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five, Out Loud Foundation, twenty-eight thousand. Uh, and Visual Arts Studio Association of St. Albert, eighteen thousand and sixty dollars. All right. Thank you for all the work of CAC for, that's a lot of work. That is a lot of work. Uh, okay. The next on our agenda was the front back residential combined units and other planning topics. So we have Adrian somewhere.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, I don't have too much of a formal, uh, presentation or any formal presentation, just uh, to reiterate the, uh, staff report. As noted within the report in February twenty eighteen, council approved a number of amendments to land use by law pertaining to, um, residential housing. Those included the addition of the RX and RXL, uh, residential lane districts. Uh, re-enabled the utilization of back lanes for, uh, residential development. Reduced building setbacks and increased lot coverage. Uh, subsequent to that, in June of twenty-two, council approved a motion for administration to investigate new housing products and prepare new regulations to present, uh, to council back by the end of Q two twenty twenty-one, and that has received an extension to the, uh, Q two, or twenty-two, twenty twenty-two date. In December of twenty twenty, additional amendments were approved by council, uh, pertaining to, uh, residential front back and zero lot line, um, products and those. Uh, so, uh, in summary, the, the RX and RXL are being utilized by a majority of developers, um, for low-density residential development right now. The residential front back, which was approved, is not being, uh, utilized or has not been utilized very much, uh, if, if at all right now. And the zero lot line has just been started to be utilized. So I believe, um, you'll be doing a tour probably in the new year about some recently built zero lot line, and that would basically be the first red, uh, zero lot line product that we have built in the city. Uh, so administration is asking, due to limited uptake and the amount of time to observe, uh, impacts, that the motion to bring forward new forms be rescinded and allow administration, uh, additional time for implementation and observation. And I did note, um, through discussion with UDI, administration is aware of several other housing products of interest. Um, but we have not received any applications to date on those. And they include secondary suites and townhouses, which are currently being evaluated through the, uh, land use by law rewrite. Uh, the return of front access townhomes, which was removed, uh, specifically in twenty twenty due to concerns about um, on-street parking, curb cuts, et cetera. The reduction of garage width requirements, which was approved, uh, by council in twenty sixteen in order to enable in-garage parking to be counted as meeting the parking requirements for residential. And then an increase in lot coverage, um, and I noted in there that lot coverage was increased in twenty eighteen. And we have not, again, seen any, um, applications on any of these. These are kind of ideas that are bandied about, but haven't been brought forward, um, to administration. And to be honest, administration thought after we did the twenty, the December twenty twenty-two, the December twenty twenty amendment that we had met the intent of the original motion, but then we realized that we're just kicking this can down the road and, and we, we really are looking for some additional time to evaluate and assess these different housing products before we come back and bring forward additional new, um, housing products for council to consider. And that's the end of my presentation.
Awesome. Okay, Council Makai has a question.
Yeah, thank you. And you maybe just answered it with your final, um, statement there, uh, Adrian, and I appreciate the, um, report, but I guess for me, it was just seeking clarity. So is the intent then that you, you're just trying to follow the, the intent of the motions that were on in front of you? Now that you, you're potentially not going to ever have zero lot line. I mean, if your current work in relation to your land use by law, uh, starts pointing that way. Because I mean, I'm looking in your alternative one motion and to me, it just sounds like the same. So I'm just trying to, trying to get the intent. Are you just trying to kind of clean up the, the mo- the original motion or are you, and then hoping that, like you said, kicking it down the road, but you will investigate this as a possibility, uh, as the other ones, other types of, um, potential product that was brought forward? Is, is that what the intent is?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, if I can, Counselor Makai, I guess big picture, the, the department is always looking and, and the city, I think, is always looking to, you know, what best practices are out there? What, what new and different housing forms are out there? Um, so that's something that we're always considering. We're looking through the LUB review right now. Um, particularly secondary suites, and as I mentioned, the, um, the secondary suites in the townhouses, which is a question. Um, and, and if there are other ways that we can easily move the needle to affect, um, housing attainability, absolutely, we're, we're always trying to do that and we would be bringing that forward to council if we can find, um, a strong suggestion of ideas that would, that would, would do that for the city. Um, but yeah, this motion, the, the, I guess the whole report is to try to address the the notion of, this motion says that we're supposed to come back with new forms and we're, I don't feel that we're in a position to bring back new forms because we haven't even seen what the previously approved housing forms, how they've, how they're actually going to perform in the city. Um, so it's, it's kind of, we're, we're coming back to council to ask that the motion be rescinded because we don't think we're in a position to do anything additionally right now.
All right. Thanks for the answer. I, I, so I mean, potentially hypothetically, that zero lot line product could could, after some analysis and coming back, it, it could be still on the floor eventually, but you just don't want to do it right now until you have more information.
So, so zero lot lines, uh, are being built in the city right now? Um, yeah, the, it's actually, we've kind of had to revamp some of our uh, building inspection process, et cetera, for those to be built, but they are being built in the city. The residential front back, we haven't seen uptake on, uh, to this point, the RX and the R, particularly the RXL. We're seeing replace almost all of the single-family R1, um, districting.
Thanks, Adrian. That was my, um, I, that was my, I, I, I was corrected as soon as I let it out of I wasn't zero lot line product. It was a front back I was referring to. Anyways, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, Counselor Broadhead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, thanks, Counselor Mackay, for your question. Uh, just a nuance to that. When I read this, I was wondering why, uh, the, the amendment, or option number one was the recommendation. To me, the rescinding, all it does is, is remove the request to report back to council. Is, is that what, is, is that the difference here? Like, I mean, uh, because what the request was is that you report back to council by a certain date. There was an extension. And now alternative one really just extends that, uh, timeline again to twenty twenty-five. But it does remove the report back to council. And then if you rescind it, then there's no imperative to do that by any timeline. How, how do you respond to that particular perspective?
Um, no, it's, uh, it's a good question, I guess. So we're looking at it, um, particularly the motion as it was approved. Probably wasn't, it, it wasn't, um, maybe realistic in order for us to be able to assess what was happening on the ground. And especially through COVID, uh, everything just had significant kind of, um, you know, delays in, in what, what was built. Um, and this, the intent of this is to take away that hard deadline. Because it it, it just seems like w- once we know enough about what the built form is doing, we'll be back to council. If there's issues with one of the housing forms, we would be back to council to say we need to revisit this. If there's If there's a new housing form that is brought forward, that, um, we find merit, then we would be back to council for that. But the, the, the hard date specifically, it, um, it just, it, to, to me, I think it makes a report. For the sake of making a report without actually giving council any worthwhile information or, or really. Um, really key decision points, like we, we kind of have to make that up to meet the deadline.
I, well, I certainly understand that perspective, Adrian. Uh, certainly don't, uh, uh, argue with, uh, what the report said. Uh, it's just whether or not we want to give a long-term extension to the report or whether we want to kill the report outright. So that's how I see this with Madam Mayor.
So if. And could, we could combine the first motion that says rescind, hold on. Um, and but the. Sounds like some of you are liking the alternative motion number one to just, you know what I'm saying? So can we combine those two? Actually, no, the second part of that is bringing back to council too. It's up to you guys. I see no more questions. Council Jolly, Council Burmatzki, no questions. Okay, does someone want to make a motion? Council Makai?
Yeah, I'll stick with the original motion that's on the floor. And I'm just waiting for it to come up. I was scrolling through my, uh. I don't see it on the screen. Yeah, I am. But I don't see it online. Oh, sorry, I apologize. That's a big motion. I should have waited. I should have been a little slower on my button. That's the, uh, following motion, A R dash twenty dash one twenty six, approved by council on June ninth, twenty twenty. Be rescinded, that Community Growth and Infrastructure Standing Committee recommend to council. That bylaw twenty one slash twenty twenty being amendment one seven zero, uh, to the land use bylaw. Be brought forward to the first council meeting in December twenty twenty. That administration continued to investigate new housing products and prepare where determined to diversify residential build form. And improve housing affordability regulations to present back to the Community Growth and Infrastructure Committee by the end of quarter two twenty twenty one. And that's all I have.
Any opening comments?
No, but I can see why. I think this just clarifies for administration and gives them, I, and as we, as the questions clarified what their intent is, so.
Okay. Anyone else on debate? Council Broadhead, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I appreciate the response by administration to, to the questions, uh, and the, uh. Uh, the comment that this is an ongoing work of, of the department, uh. Um, I'm not gonna vote against this particular motion, but, uh. I still would have liked to have seen some sort of deadline saying, here, here's a, a time that, uh. That there will be a specific touch point back to council and, and related to this particular topic. But, uh, I, I, you know, I trust our administration to do what's right. And if there's a big problem coming forward or a big opportunity, they'll come forward and let us know. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else on debate? Council Makai, any to close?
No, I, uh.
Alright, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. We're on to budget. Council Hughes wants to change the funding source of the regional transit. Cause I'm not gonna ask you for a presentation on the budget. So why don't you just read your proposal in?
I had it. Oh, here I go. I'm like, where did it go? Um, so I'm doing this as an amendment, right? Or do we do this as a separate motion? I just don't know if I want the wave, if I need the wave of motion or not.
It's just another P M, isn't it?
It's a notice of mo- it's a notice of.
Okay, so I'll give the twenty one day. So the twenty one day notice of motions waived for the following motion. Do we want to do it separately or put it all together?
Do it separately.
Okay, so the twenty one day notice motions waived.
Alright, any comment?
That, that motion to waive twenty one requires two-thirds majority, just so everyone's clear.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. And the reason for this is, is just the timeliness of it. I think that when this goes forward for. Announcement to the public of what the final tax increase is, I think that they deserve to know what it is today. And not say that it's going to be five point eight and then come back later and say it's a four point six. So whatever the decision is, I think we should do it in a timely fashion. And I recognize that the reason why we had to do them, that I didn't know what Edmonton's gonna vote. So this is just in relation to responses to what Edmonton decided to do with their budget. And so, but I just would like to have the public, yep, know what the phone number is. That's why I'm doing it.
Council Jolly?
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't know if this is to administration or possibly Council Broadhead. Is that okay?
It's just waving of notice right now. Is that, is it on the timing?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, I just haven't, I, I understood that there wasn't any background information about the implications of Edmonton's decision yet. That's the last I heard unless there's been an update.
No, I, and I don't think there will be, you know, right, Council Hughes' argument is we want to get the final tax rate. But we don't even, the one point four is not gonna happen. We're not gonna have to pay that. So, uh, we're gonna have to do an adjustment like we always do in April.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's helpful, Mayor.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if you have anything to add.
No, Mayor, uh, the only thing I'd say is I think it's, it's prudent at this point in time to keep that money designated from a source, um, pending resolution, as you know, going forward. And it makes sense to have that, uh, for potentially one-time expenditure to come from the reserve.
Alright, can I just call the vote on waving? Okay, uh, so this is just on waving notice, a motion call for the vote. Voting's closed and that motion passes unanimously. Council Hughes, read the second part in.
Have the funding source for one million four hundred two thousand of Saint Albert's allocation to the twenty twenty three Edmonton Regional Metropolitan Transit Commission. Be amended from the twenty twenty three tax base to stabilization reserve and the twenty twenty three taxes reduced by this amount.
Alright, before I accept that, we'll go to questions. I'll start. They know Diane's online. Can't wait to answer this question. What's the balance in the stabilization reserve, Diane?
Oh, oh, here, I wasn't even ready for that one, to be honest with you. Actually, uh, Suzanne Finley is on as well. She might have the answer.
Hi, yes, it's just, uh, around four point four million dollars in the stabilization reserve, uncommitted.
Okay, alright. And if we, so if we take it from stabilization, reduces our taxes by that amount, um. And, but then we don't have that stabilization reserve available for other things or to offset taxes in the future. But if we put it on the tax rate, would it, would it automatically fall off next year, Diane?
Uh, if, well, right now it would be in there as an ongoing budget, but we would, we could just take it out next year if it didn't apply. Like, it wasn't passed as a one time, it wasn't passed as a one-time budget motion. It was passed as an ongoing budget. Um, but if things changed, we would, we would just get a motion to, to change that and pull it out of next year's.
Okay, perfect. Alright, I see Council Jolly's hand is up too. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if, so if there are additional costs, um, having to do with dismantling. This, um, is that just something that administration would bring to us, um, in twenty twenty three, once that's known? Is that fair?
Yeah, I would say that's a, that's a fair statement. Um, that will be one of the challenges is that if there is, um, you know, additional funds required, uh, in the new year. For, for whatever happens, um, you know, the balance in our stabilization fund is getting, getting pretty low. Um, so we may have to look into some other potential reserve sources to be able to support them.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Uh, oh, Council Makai?
Yeah, no problem. I mean, if you were having a sidebar.
We're having sidebar.
It's gonna change. I, and I, I maybe, uh, I mean. I'm just looking at the timeline and, um, maybe it's unfair to Council Broadhead because he won't really be able to respond. But at the same time, potentially, our, our first installment was supposed to come out when. I mean, I missed.
I think.
First of January, the requisition was expected, Council.
And, but we can, you told me we could wait till.
We have thirty days to pay it from the time we receive the requisition.
And is that for the total one point four?
No.
No, there was split, um, a smaller portion on the first of January, and then the bulk of it would have been due with the, uh, commensurate with the beginning of service in April.
Yeah, and I think that, so I mean, potentially though, I mean, the commission was supposed to stand up April first or April, April thirtieth. So potentially that would be the total amount of what we would actually need.
Installment, maybe.
Yeah, that first installment. So the, the conversation around the total use of one point four may be moot. Recognizing the previous comments around maybe some other closing costs or, you know, uh, out of this is. And I'm looking at Mr. LaFleur through one eye and cross-eyed. Usually what happens is the only people who win on this one is the legal profession, so, uh. So, uh, so we won't know what those costs are until probably well into the year.
I, I would say that's a correct characterization, Council. We, we don't know what we don't know. There's decisions that have to be made by the M T S C F board. There's, uh, the formal notification that still has to come from the city of Edmonton in, in terms of that way ahead. And then we'll, we'll figure out how we navigate it going forward.
Uh, so I mean, guess logistically wise, I mean, I know, um, you know, when we were talking about the budget and what would. How, how we would end involvement in, in the commission would require a motion. So it's anticipated that Edmonton is going to put forward a motion.
They've already done it.
They did, okay. And that's the information I didn't have. Alright, so, okay.
Yeah, so last Thursday, Edmonton Council approved, um, a motion to withdraw from the M T S C. What practical form that takes in terms of their official communication is, we should know this week, hopefully.
Okay, don't they need three other members of the commission to agree? They can just withdraw. Oh, I see. Yeah, they chose option one. Okay, I got it.
Okay. Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So just so we clarify, so Edmonton brought forth the motion to withdraw and it passed. So my motion to dissolve would then no longer be necessary, correct?
That's not correct.
Oh.
To withdraw from the commission is one thing. To request that the commission itself, at least three of its directors initiate the process to dissolve the commission is a very different thing. The two can, can exist side by side. Whether you want it to is up to you, Council Hughes, but the two are not, uh, mutually exclusive.
If I needed to withdraw it over the break, could I just send an email out and say I'm withdrawing it and that would be sufficient?
Uh, yes, you, you initially served notice of it by email, so email notice that you're withdrawing the motion would suffice, correct?
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out all the consequences, the ball going down the hill. But Edmonton has effectively withdrawn for that, and the intention is the commission will not be operational this time next year.
Yeah, I, I certainly Edmonton won't be part of it, I think.
Okay.
Um, now they have, it, it's a year-long process if they choose to withdraw. And again, I would just caution that I think the M T S C S board, E M T S C, excuse me, board. I believe has a meeting on the fifth of January and that will be a seminal piece as they determine collectively how they wish to respond to that as well.
Okay. Okay, I think that was it. Alright, I'm ready to argue when you want.
Alright, I don't see any more questions, so I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Okay, so council, I, I think that Edmonton's vote was, um, a surprise to many of us. Um, but the reality is that when I look at this, um, that I don't want to say we aren't gonna give the money that we require to give. We're still gonna comply with what we have for our requirements. And even if the full funding source, uh, for operating isn't necessary, I want to put aside because there will be, we'll call it closing costs. Even if the commission does wrap up, that we need to have set aside so that we acknowledge that we do this. Now, we had, as a recommendation from administration, one point four million to come out of the growth stabilization, uh, come out of the stabilization reserve specifically to reduce taxes. And when that came forward, I was uncomfortable with it because there was no rationale for what would be different between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. To justify moving one point four million off the books and putting into stabilization. So this motion is effectively just putting it back to what they recommended with the acceptance. That, that we are not gonna require this probably in twenty twenty four. Now, if something happens between now and then, and for some reason the commission stays operational. And that there is a requirement for that funding, well then certainly, we will go back to having a budget and it'll be added to that years, um. That used taxes, but, uh, I think that the initial recommendation for the one point four now has justification. For how we can reduce it and how we can expect it to not come back to a, a one-time increase since we take it off the books, uh, one year, one year from now. So that's what I thought we should do is just, um, acknowledge the situation where it is today. And acknowledge that we, the, the most likely probability is that we don't require this as an operating item any longer. And that we can use as a one-time, um, funding source to handle the situation for the E M T S C. And, um, and in turn, reduce those taxes. I believe we're going from a five point eight to a four point six if this is approved today. Which is, uh, substantial and I, I don't want to have the taxes go up to a five point eight on the public when it doesn't need to be. Especially in such trying times with all this inflation, except other people are dealing with. I want to see that we come down to the lowest number we possibly can. Um, well, I don't know what the inflation rate will be next year, but this year it's hitting people hard. And if we have that opportunity to reduce it by another one point two percent, I would love to see us be able to do that. And give the people at least a good news story that we got below five percent and we did everything we could to acknowledge it, even if at the last minute. That's it, thank you.
Council Broadhead?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um. Whatever happened at the commission's side, this is a good motion. And, uh, and certainly in, in the consequence of what happened, uh, in Edmonton, this is appropriate. So thanks, Council Hughes.
I, I see no more people wanting to weigh in on debate, so I think of close off. Let's call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. So now we have the main motion or budget. And we're wanting to jump in and do that one. I, I, is there some numbers that we need to get adjusted in them?
There are. I think we've got the measure.
Yeah. Mike, go ahead, Mike. There's gonna be a few adjustments in the actual numbers.
Yeah.
So that the twenty twenty three consolidated municipal and utility budget in the amount of three hundred and twenty eight million. Fifty nine thousand three hundred and the net tax requirement of.
No, it's done by, it was a hundred and twenty six, now it's a hundred and twenty four eight. Yeah, it's adjusted.
That's the correct amount?
It's on the screen.
Th- those are the correct amounts on the screen, Counselor.
Okay, yeah, uh, tax amount, uh, the tax requirement of one million two hundred and twenty. One hundred and twenty four million, eight hundred and eighty six thousand three hundred. As shown in the attached titled twenty twenty three consolidated budget revised be approved. Two, that the ten-year municipal growth capital plan provided as the attachment titled ten-year municipal growth capital plan be approved. Three, that the ten-year utility growth capital plan provided as attached titled ten-year utility growth. Capital plan be approved. And number four, that Wild North is funded for twelve thousand. Funded from the twenty twenty two council contingency budget.
Well done. Anything to comment on this?
I think we've had lots of good debates and, uh, changes and revisions and back and forth. So we've landed with a good budget and thanks to administration for all their support and pulling all the information together. Um, and, uh, a- and supporting council with clarification through the I R process. It helped us to get to a good, uh, clear understanding of the budget. And we should approve what, uh, has been consolidated in front of us for today.
Council Hughes?
Yeah, um, this has been quite a ride for this budget process, I think. And this council, we started a nine point two percent tax increase and we're down to a four point six effectively as of today. Um, and it was in large part because we, as a collective, agreed to reduce the operational taxes by three percent. So it wasn't just the electrical franchise fee, which is a different bill and a different color. There was also a three percent tax decrease that we just did with our, with our taxes. And I, I want to thank council also just for approving this last minute motion because it's gonna make a difference to people's lives. Who are challenged already trying to make their bills pay. So what I'd love to see it lower, yes. But it's the best that we could do at the times that we had with the decisions we made. And it's, it's still, we're, we made decisions to not make it even worse next year. Um, so that at least we're not hurting ourselves by just doing a delayed gratification or an instant gratification and then having to pay for it in eleven months' time. So, um, I'm willing to accept this budget as is, good, bad and ugly. And accept that this is the public, that when then we're coming forward with this for the population. That's it, thank you.
Council Makai?
Yeah, no, and I won't be long because I, I also want to make sure that we point out the, um. Excellent efforts made by administration. Um, I mean, this was definitely going to be one of the more difficult for the reasons.
Excellent efforts made by administration. Um, I mean, this was definitely going to be one of the more difficult for the reasons as already been stated. Uh, but this still, uh, strikes a balance between maintaining services that are important to our residents. While also addressing the, uh, inflationary pressures that are impacting not only municipalities, but every. Business, every organization across. And so keeping it, uh, with this now amendment, we keep it below the inflationary rate and, uh. I just want to congratulate administration as well for all the heavy lifting they did at the front end. And I appreciate all the, um. Uh, cooperation amongst council to get it to where we are today.
Awesome. Counselor Bromansky.
Uh, thank you. I want to thank my other council members. I know it's a tough budget. Um, you know, everybody had difficult situations to decipher. I want to thank administration for all the information they have provided to us. But, um. We, at this point, we're at a four point six, um, just because of Edmonton's vote. It it really, you know, that was how the budget got changed at this point. And there were several other opportunities that I feel. Personally, that, um, you know, we could have, we could have done better in the budget. So again, I respect the vote of everyone. I respect the budget, the work at hand, but I will not support it just because. I feel we could have done, uh, somewhat better. So, thank you.
Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. Um, I'll echo all the thanks around the room. Administration really, um, did a great job in supporting us through this budget process. Um. I'm, I am a little bit disappointed with the budget, probably for opposite reasons, um, as yourself, Counselor Bromansky. I would have loved to see more funding for our. Um, community partners, you know, Calio Collective, Seniors Association, Family Resource Center, um, but I do respect the. Um, decision of council on that one. Um, so I'll, you know, I will be supporting the budget. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Broadhead.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, this is, uh, this is an interesting budget in the end, uh, for me, uh, personally. Um. What happened in Edmonton was a step back in so many ways for this particular region. But, uh, they, um. They have the right to make motions and pass budgets, no matter how ill-informed I believe they are. And, uh, in any case, uh, we'll go forward and and quite honestly, we'll go back to doing business the way we always have done it. May not be the best, but at least the people at St. Albert will be served public transit. And this budget in the end, uh. That's tough for coming out of COVID, uh, all sorts of pressures come to bear on budget and, uh. And I too would like to thank administration and and council indeed, uh. For the efficiencies that were were found, um. And for the last previous motion, I mean, it's it's a bit of a. Backhand compliment, I guess, if you will. Uh, that you kill one and and then you, uh. You you lose sight of the long-term benefit, but that's okay. Um, I am fully convinced that we'll see regional transit around. Uh, because the the economics of it and the practicalities that are just the the business case is too strong. Um, and, uh, it'll happen here eventually, just not now. Anyway, uh, certainly support the budget as it is and we'll go forward.
Anything to close, Counselor Kilik?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to, in closing, say that. With this budget. Worked hard, council worked hard with administration and all the support from administration. To find a balance between our capital projects moving forward. Maintaining what we have. Uh, our RMR budget is important. Um, maintaining what we have, maintaining a low debt level. Um. Funding new positions as the city grows, we need to have that. That room to support the growth. Uh, and a direction forward. And, um. So that this this budget strikes that all-around balance between. Uh, growth. Maintaining our our reserves for unforeseen things that can happen in our RMR. Uh, and as the city grows, we we need to provide more services to our residents, whether it's servicing more sidewalks. Uh, plowing more streets, picking up more garbage, handling more building permits. So that growth has to be funded from somewhere. And unfortunately, um. Uh, it comes from taxes, but we've been able to keep taxes down. To an acceptable level. To manage all of those those things. So I think we've ended up at a good place. I'd also like to recognize. Counselor Broadhead, uh, for all the work he's done on regional transit. Uh, I don't think anybody could. Find. Anyone that has put in more. Blood, sweat and tears, uh, into trying to. Guide us in the right direction that he truly. Honestly believed in his heart was going to get us to a right, um, place. And unfortunately, due to. Situation outside of his control, um, totally outside of all of our control, the city of Edmonton made a different decision. So. Uh, although, uh, it it ends up. Helping us in our tax. Uh, situation, we should not. Lose sight that we need people like Counselor Broadhead that are committed. Uh, to try and move big things forward. Sometimes they don't always work. But part of this budget discussion was around moving some of those other big pieces forward. So I'd like to. Uh, personally recognize Counselor Broadhead for the good work he did in that. And, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. And, uh, uh, with the budget as it is, and and I think we've ended up in a good place.
Call for the vote. When he's closed and that motion passes with Counselor Bromansky opposed. And that takes us to. Nine point one was on consent, which was all the utility bylaws to just adjust all the rates. I'm not going to read them because. Would make no sense, but the rates have been adjusted, but I can say that. Sorry, I can say that it's a three point eight, did I hear? Yeah, three point eight percent increase in utilities. And Counselor, Mr. LaFleur, thank you for allowing us to do a bylaw on consent. And finally, nine point two, um, was the police services. Uh, building borrowing bylaw, which is second and third reading. Um. Uh, is there a presentation?
No, um.
Second and third reading, but we do have everyone available to answer questions by.
So how come this one was not on consent? It was never on consent. Yeah, I'm just wondering why it wasn't on consent.
The, the, without getting into a long explanation, this different considerations apply when you have a bylaw like this for borrowing that requires advertising. Opportunity for public input, that's why.
Okay, all right. It's no big deal. I was just wondering why. But Counselor Hughes does have a question.
So I pulled something from consent that was non-consent, so that was successful. Okay. So the question I have is, it's, um, in the bylaw, we have a couple amendments that have like from building to buildings. Is, would it be, um. A difficult, change any of their outcome for being approved tonight if we were to put like comma and actually write what the like. At the, the subtitle, what the buildings are at Mahoney Place and Bowdrie Place, or is there an issue with that? Because it, but just having it say buildings kind of leaves it a little bit vague.
I guess I would look to, hi, it's Brenda here. I'd look to David LaFleur on that. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about, um. Adding buildings with the S, just to make sure it covered Mahoney. And Bowdrie Place. Um, I'm just wondering, David. If that should be clarified or not, or how that could be done.
Now, through the chair, from a, from a strictly legal and legislative point of view, it's just an amendment to the bylaw, right? We're just making sure that the. It's more than one building that's covered by this borrowing. In terms of clarifying more what buildings and what, I mean, that's. That's a, that's a matter for those on the, on the, in the meeting today who know. What the project is, so.
Okay, I think Mr. Hilt wants to add.
Yeah, thank you, worship. And I, and I would add to that, if you do, the names of Mahoney and Bowdrie, I'd add an associated parking lot for Mahoney. I didn't want to lose that.
I I just, um. I think that it would just provide some clarity just for everybody so that, um, nobody makes assumptions that there's trying to have any extra buildings snuck in there. Not that you got the money to put the sneaking in there. But just so that everybody has clarity, if we could. Uh, on the second amendment, um, or second, my, my screen will not go, don't ask me why it's not going up. Okay, um. Where it says for the second one, the amendment for buildings, could it be comma? Mahoney Place, Bowdrie Place, Mahoney Place and Parking Lot and and Bowdrie Place? Would that work?
I I believe it would, but I'll just make sure that, uh, from a project management perspective.
I just don't want it to be that the becomes null and void because we've changed something, right? I know if we change a number, obviously that resets it, but I don't. We haven't changed the intention, we've just clarified the intention.
Oh, and it is absolutely specific to Bowdrie and, uh, Maloney. There's no doubt about it. I'll just make sure from a project management perspective, there's, we're not missing anything, just to be safe.
I'm looking at David LaFleur because I just don't want this to blow up. That's all.
Give me a moment. I'm thinking, uh, through the chair, I'm thinking about the implications of that. That's not. Typical legislative language and I wouldn't want that that change itself. To cause issues. So I'm going to take, uh, I'm hearing it.
What exactly do you want the amendment to say and where?
Just, you know, it says where the founder has buildings, you put buildings, comma, Mahoney Place, Parking Lot and Bowdrie Place. And then I'll just be clarifying what we're actually building because the word going from building to buildings is quite. Vague. That's all. But I don't want to do it if it's going to screw something up, obviously.
I think we have Tim online. Tim, do you have any concerns from a, uh, purely engineering project management?
No, that would just be additional clarification. I don't have any concerns. Maloney Place and Bowdrie Place are the two buildings and the parking lot at Maloney Place. No, no other concerns.
Yeah.
So, if I may, through the, through the chair, if, if what's being suggested is that after the word buildings. Be added a bracket. Mahoney Place and Bowdrie Place?
Mahoney Place and Parking Lot and Mahoney Place.
Sorry. Bowdrie Place Parking Lot?
Mahoney Place.
Mahoney Place Parking Lot. And. Bowdrie Place, close bracket, that would, that would be.
Perfect.
Yeah, that would not alter the intent of the borrowing. Nope, that's fine.
Do we need two secs to get that written up? By ledge, like to get the exact sections of the bylaw that we're changing. Probably.
And if I could just clarify, Tim, it's Maloney, isn't it, with an L?
That, that is correct.
Just while we're, just while we're getting it up there.
Yeah, Maloney with an L after, uh, Daniel Maloney was the. Named after.
That was my mistake. Sorry. I knew it sounded funny.
I mean. I had one more question, um. It, which is that, from what I understand, the estimates were done in prior twenty twenty. Uh, why were the estimates not updated? For the most recent RMR. For council's budget, why did we not update the estimates when they're four years old?
Diane, um, Morty, perhaps you can talk about that and Brenda, go ahead.
Um, okay, I'll just jump in. You're you're talking about the estimates for for the cost of the borrowing. Um. Yeah, I I I mean, I think what it would be is ultimately at the end of the day, the the rate that we're going to pay is going to be when we actually take out the the debenture. So even what we estimate today, um, may not be what we actually take the debenture out for, could go up, could could go down from what we put in. So we didn't feel it was, um. You know, necessarily added a lot of value to come up with an, with another estimate. Uh, we are restricted, obviously, through the bylaw. To a maximum, um, interest rate. So if there, if the interest rate ended up being higher than that, we would have to come back to council. We'd likely have to. Look at either, uh, doing another. A subsequent borrowing by law if the, if it was above that or, uh. Or a, an alternate funding source for the project.
So, yeah, so I think I just, because of the scrambling, I don't think I got the question right to you, Diane. And I don't think it may be the one to ask. I don't know. It's just that why didn't we update the cast of capital estimates when the last thing that was done was prior to twenty twenty? And when it came forward in the RMR in May, it wasn't updated. Anytime recent, and we know there's been substantial inflation. Why didn't, why weren't the estimates that were officially being asked for, um, reevaluated from the five million is what I'm asking.
The actual expected cost estimated costs are still at five million dollars. It's, uh, we are looking to stay within that charter budget allotment to be borrowing, uh, bylaws requested for seven point five million, but only will. Apply, uh, five million at this time.
Yeah, I I understand it's five million. I'm wondering why you didn't update the estimate. From, because you, it says here, like, the last time was based in twenty twenty values, and I think it was actually prior to that. So. You know, we're looking at three plus years, knowing there was massive inflation that occurred and nobody went back to revise the numbers. So. Why is what I'm asking?
If if I may just, uh, jump in through the chair to Counselor Hughes, um, keep in mind, this was a twenty twenty-two approved project. So this was approved in last year's, last year's budget. Um, and it was a growth project as well, not an RMR project. So, um, we wouldn't have updated it since that time.
Okay.
So the twenty twenty-two inflationary factors that we've been been facing, we wouldn't have known that at the time of the project approval back in the, in December of twenty-one.
Okay, I understand. So it's not as late as we think.
Right. So what? So that's why we potentially added, uh, a bigger contingency on the borrowing by law than we normally would. So we, we've sort of taken the approach that we. Um, have typically added twenty-five percent on to the borrowing by law over and above the project, just to give. A little bit of room if if the project costs, um, potentially change with this one, we went with a full fifty percent. Knowing that, um. You know, it had been, it, we've been facing this inflationary factors since we had the project approved. Um, but we are restricted at this point, um, through the approved capital project to the five million. So if it looks like the project's going to be coming in higher. We'll have to be coming back to council either for an approval to increase the budget or. To look at modifying what we're doing there, if that's even a possibility at that point.
Okay. I think that going forward, if between the time that we get approval and the time that we do a borrowing by law, we know that there's going to be a substantial change in the numbers. I mean. This has been an extraordinary year where we don't normally see that kind of fluctuation, but if the extraordinariness becomes more ordinary, which is not something I want. Um, then maybe we, it might be an opportunity for us to go back and revise that before we come for a boring by law, just so that we. All are on the same page because I just know that, you know, if you guys come back and say you need more money, six and a half million from five and a half, it's. It it looks worse than if you just tell us upfront that it's five, it's six and a half million and we just move forward on it. There's just less delays, less uncertainty and less of why didn't you get it done right the first time? So, um, and that was the first thing that I saw was like, why are the delays? So thank you for explaining that. I do appreciate it. Um, I'm willing to bring further motion if you want to, Mayor. I don't care.
Yeah. More questions? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Kilik.
Yeah, um, it it's. Kind of an administrative question, but, uh, in the actual borrowing by law, it it's. Second paragraph, it says, whereas council of City of St. Albans has estimated that the total cost of the said project is seven million, five hundred thousand. So that's the borrowing by law. Amount. But we've just discussed that we've actually agreed that the project would be. Five million. So I I'm curious if that's just a. Um, kind of a housekeeping. Item. Or, or is that the standard way we? Do it? Because what council has really approved is five million and we understand that. It had a fifty percent. Um, contingency added to to get us to the higher number. So I just, just like to understand what the wording in the. Why the wording in the bylaw is, is. Saying something that isn't what council agreed to.
Go through the chair. I'll take a first crack at it in Diane or or the, um. CA or Deputy CA may want to jump in as well. So the bylaw, the borrowing by law is just to authorize borrowing. It's not to actually borrow. It's just to authorize borrowing. And so that bylaw needs to be internally consistent, right? That's it. It's a standard formula that we use and and I would also point out. You're talking about wording in a preamble. The preamble is just a preamble. The actual bylaw only starts after the words, the council enacts as follows. So it's, it's, it's there because, as Diana's explained. Uh, if if the cost should happen to go up, we wouldn't want to have to come back and go through the process, which is a lengthy one, right? To to, it involves advertising and and potentially a petition. Uh, you'd still need to come back and get council to authorize. An amendment to the actual project charter. Without that, nothing more than the five million gets gets borrowed. So it's basically an anticipation that there may be an escalation of costs. If there's not, no problem, but that that's why it's there. Because this is only for purpose of authorizing borrowing and not for actual borrowing. I don't know if that's a good enough explanation that there are two different things.
You're good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I guess it, it just seemed very weird to me that preamble tends to set the stage for. The final language, so it, it wasn't. I I guess it's. I, I guess it sounds like it's standard boilerplate and uh, well, we'll, we'll leave it at that, I, I just, it just looked weird when I read it. But I, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, Counselors, do you want to make the motion?
Let's do it, I just want to say Counselor Killik, the thing is that it has to say seven point five, because you can't say, I want to borrow seven point five, but it's only going to cost me five. So you have to say what the potential maximum is, and that's our budget, so that's why the, it's coming in that way. Um, okay, so that by law twenty-eight slash twenty-two be read a second time.
Awesome, anything to comment?
Let's keep it fairly, fairly brief here, but we have all gone through the Police Services Building, we can see that there is definitely deficiency in. What we're providing for accommodations for the staff to be able to work. Um, if we can actually get this accomplished in five million dollars, I will be impressed, there's two buildings that are almost being gutted and redone. Um, to improve the situation for um, those people that are have to work there, so. Um, and this is a, a city resource that we have to acknowledge that we have to take care of and maintain, so. Uh, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can keep it to five million, I'm also pessimistic that we're not going to come back and see revisions to the budget because of that. And if it does, um, understand that these numbers are be prior to the inflationary, so. As a result, don't be surprised if we come back and have this discussion again before the next year, that's it.
Counselor Killik, go ahead.
Yeah, just uh, again, to build on Counselor Hughes' comments, so we've. We've uh, did a walk through the building, we see that it definitely needs to be upgraded and expanded in size. Uh, look back at the consultant's report, a report that said we needed to have uh, better front desk services, better security in the building. Uh, more room for officers as, as the city grows. And uh, the key point for me was some questions that we raised about future of policing in the province, still a big unknown. And irrespective of what happens with policing uh, in, in the province at a provincial level. Um, we will still need the space and we'll still need to do the upgrades and. Uh, these upgrades will, will get us to that until twenty twenty-nine or twenty twenty, twenty thirty-four. So uh, it, it's money well spent and uh, it, it will end up with a, a much better functioning building. With space for our police and, and uh. And support services to uh, to grow into and, and address some of the, the very apparent shortfalls of lack of. You know, having, having papers, you know, boxes and printers stored in the hallways uh, of a, of a building. Or potentially blocking entrances with boxes of windshield wiper, antifreeze. Uh, it, it just became so evident when you walk around that building. That it needs these kind of upgrades and this will be a great investment for the City of St. Albert.
All right, I see no more hands up, so I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed.
So Cheryl, um, for this motion, you have it in brackets, right? Do we have to do an amendment for someone else? I, I don't care. I just that the, the brackets need to be there.
Where are you looking?
And it says buildings and we have to put brackets, I just want to make sure that we read what it's supposed to be saying, that's all.
I was looking at the different one, there go, yeah, it says there, yeah. It's Maloney. But we, this is the one we just voted on, right? Yeah, okay. We're good? All right. Uh, Mike, who did that one? Just keep going, yeah, yeah.
The bylaws twenty-eight slash twenty-two be amended to delete the word building wherever found in place that where the word buildings comma bracket. Maloney Place, Maloney Place Parking Lot and Bojji Place, close bracket.
There we go. Anything to add?
I think we had that full discussion.
Yeah. Call for the vote. Perfect, that one passes unanimously, is that one? Yeah, and then. Finally, third, go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
But by law twenty-eight slash twenty-two as amended, be read a third time.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closing, that passes unanimously. Oh, council, you guys have your updates today. All right, who wants to start?
I can start.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I can start because I had nothing on any of my committees.
None of your committees, Matt? Counselor Killik? Most of your CSAC, we've already discussed today, so I don't even think you need to go into it.
I, I was, I was just gonna say. Exactly, that's CSAC met and made the recommendations that we approved today at council, it was a great meeting, so. Um, that's all on that one, we, on environmental services, we met to review the upcoming. Um, list of items that will be added to the environmental team's. Um, administrative work plan and that it would tie back in uh, to the strategic planning process that. Um, the working teams go through to, to address council priorities and they build a bottom up and say how to all of their, their activities uh, link into that, so we. We had that meeting uh, last week, yeah, good session, lots of good input and boy, lots of. Of tie-in between the environmental uh, team's work and uh, council priorities, so good to, good to see those kind of direct uh, linkages. Um, and on Edmonton Salutes, we did have a wrap-up meeting for the year. Um, we've concluded that it looks like we're going to try and get back in place for uh, face-to-face meetings. Um, and as well as hybrid meetings, scheduling is a challenge of all of the Edmonton Salutes members. Uh, but I think it's something that we'll be able to address as we go forward in the, in the new year.
All right, thank you for that, and please pass on our thanks to everyone at CSAC, Counselor Hughes, how about you do anything?
I do have something actually, it's just hang on to your hats here, guys, so the um. Waste Commission, yeah, Edmonton Waste Minimization Commission met. And just let you guys know, so there was a presentation about uh, circular economies and specifically about tool libraries. Um, and other types of things like that, and there was um, a couple of communities that did this sort of like pilot programs and had the funding. Then with them, including Banff, so um. If we do want to look at something like a tool library, there are a few municipalities that already did that, but.
Don't we have a tool library in Sydney?
I don't.
Yeah.
We did have it, but it no longer.
Yeah, so um, they did receive funding to, to get it started and. So in the event that we do want to see it, there are a couple municipalities that now have it in the province up and running, so we could ask them for that. The uh, the other thing was the uh, EPR, which you probably already know everything on this, Mayor, but um. They're saying that the minimum collection's going to need to be bi-weekly, one depot for every hundred and twenty-five thousand people. And uh, there will be more details that come up forward, so there's going to be a lot of questions about this, the unknowns of the service standards for multifamilies. Uh, which one of the PROs are the professional organizations, how they will operate, which ones will operate in Alberta? Uh, whether the municipalities will have first rate of refusal or not, there's a lot of questions that still need to be figured out here, they, both the financial and operational impacts. And um, the other thing that just be aware of is that the PRO, as they call it, the organization's kind of organizing it, will have to be a nonprofit group. And with, this is the first sector in, I guess, the country that requires it to be a nonprofit, so it does have something else going on there. Um, it's just more a challenge. And I think. I'm just looking, give us anything else here, just trying to read my own writing, I don't see anything else that's a major, um. The question to the, also came up with this with the, the recycle, yeah, the EPR is just, is it going to go to a landfill or where, how we're going to reuse these actual items after we collect them? So there certainly is uh, a lot of questions starting to come forward, um, and as they come up. I will share that fascinating information with all of you, but this could have ramifications on us operationally and for our costs as well, so uh, we'll just see what comes of it all. That's it.
Better have ramifications.
Well, it could also cost in costs, it just depends on who's collecting, who's charging, how we're charging, where it goes, where they're charging. So a lot of things up in the air right now.
So just so everyone knows, I have, I now sit on the EPR Transition Committee with Alberta Recycling, so those questions will be answered through that and. Alberta Recycling is, or sorry, Alberta um, municipalities is starting a municipal. Task force on helping municipalities transition, although I say now it's pretty. Sophisticated with big staff, but, but there is that resource out there through Alberta municipalities. Uh, Counselor Broadhead, I don't want to hear anything about transit, give me all your other updates.
Well, in that case, I only really have two.
Salutes?
Uh, well, I uh, I was privileged to actually be invited to the uh, uh, Christmas uh, celebration of the Edmonton Salutes Committee. And uh, I, and they recognized me for ten years on the committee, so. And uh, they were anxious to work with you, uh, Counselor Killik, and I know you'll enjoy working with a very fine group of people. Uh, so that and then uh, the other non-transit event was uh, the uh. Edmonton Metro Region Board Audit and Finance Committee met and considered uh, budget implications uh, for the coming years. Uh, three-year budget uh, forecast and uh, it was actually a very interesting meeting, if you can call an audit and finance meeting, in- interesting, but it was, so uh. So that was it, and then uh, a brief thought about transit is that the telephones and the meetings were numerous over the last couple of weeks, anyway, thank you.
How about you, Counselor Bermansky?
I don't have anything that hasn't been updated already through council and especially all the new arts items coming, so. I'll leave it for the new year.
Okay, Counselor Jolly?
Uh, thanks, seniors, uh, advisory committee did not meet, youth committee did, um, kind of. They're horrified at the idea of the committee being disbanded, so kind of, there's a bit of a preview for the recommendations next year. Um, and they're looking forward to welcoming their new member in the new year.
Perfect. All right, I need a motion, oh wait, no, information request, those motion announcements. Anyone, just put up your hand.
Mayor, I, I know I have a couple's uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
But I might have to look them up unless Cheryl has them handy.
Cheryl, do we have any that we're missing?
I have one, I have one.
Okay, uh, hold on, it's in the chat now, Counselor Jolly.
Um, so it's that administration brings forward a funding formula for the outside agency grant that accounts for inflation, increased eligibility being enabled in twenty twenty-three by. And we'll slot in a date there, um, once we chat with it a little bit more.
Okay. All right. And Counselor Hughes, you had something?
Yeah, I just, and I forgot, oh, here it is, found it. But administration bring forward a project charter for the twenty twenty-three RMR budget to upgrade and or replace the city council bench. And I'd love it.
Did it again?
That to replace, you know, I discussed that budget, the twenty twenty-three RMR budget, bring forward a project charter. Upgrade and or replace the city council bench, and it would be really awesome when we do the upgrade if the plugins worked. You know, that kind of an upgrade would be.
IT would like that, and Bill's like, no, you cannot have electricity.
I'm currently running on battery right now because none of the plugins here work, so before people think that we're living in a lap of luxury, um, I'm not, that's it.
All right, uh, anything else, council, announcements?
Mayor, I have one more, um, IR, my apologies.
Yeah.
That's just, uh, what's the plan for the stat tracker in terms of maintenance and whatnot, so I think everyone saw that one.
Yeah. Okay, I need motion to go in camera for our conversation with the city manager. Counselor Mackay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, that council moved in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to section twenty-four. One A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
Okay, call for the vote on that one. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously, all right. Um, are we, are you gonna give me a host? Okay. Sounds good.